This November 8th, 2013, regular meeting number eight of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the pleasure of reasons for movement of silence and the performance of the National Anthem by the Centerville High School Wildcat Guitar Ensemble under the direction of Bill Burke. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. There was again Centerville High School Wildcat Guitar Ensemble under the direction of Mr. Bill Burke. A few announcements before we continue tonight's meeting. The board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session which preceded tonight's regular meeting. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and relating meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then upcoming meetings and agendas. If you have signed up to speak before the board during citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of your remarks at this time to the deputy clerk sitting in the section to my right. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off for silence your cell phone. I know that Mr. Stork is on his way, will soon be here. And let me call on Mr. Ash for recognition.
December 2nd through 6th is National Inclusive School Week. Inclusive Schools Week is an annual event sponsored by the Inclusive Schools Network, ISN, and is held each year during the first week in December. This year's theme is Authentic Inclusion: Increasing Our Comfort Zone, which encourages the active inclusion of students with disabilities into the classroom as well as socially, and involves families as partners in the decision-making process. Since its inception in 2001, Inclusive Schools Week has celebrated the progress that schools have made in providing a supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse student population, including students who are marginalized due to disability, gender, socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preference, and other factors. This week also provides an important opportunity for educators, students, and parents to discuss what else needs to be done in order to ensure that their schools continue to improve their ability to successfully educate all children.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. The next order of business is recognition of the 2013 School Bond Committee. Let me call on Vice Chair, Mr. Darren Kofax.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of the School Board, I want to thank the members of the 2013 School Bond Referendum Committee for their tireless efforts in working with the voters of Fairfax County, who in turn showed their overwhelming support of the bond. The November 5th election results reported that 74% of the Fairfax County voters approved the $250 million school construction bond referendum. The bond committee did an excellent job of communicating to our voters that Fairfax County Public Schools faces a critical shortage of facilities and that our growth is rapidly outpacing classrooms and facilities. The following school improvements are included in this 2013 School Bond Referendum: Construction of two elementary schools, renovations and renovation planning for 17 elementary schools, two middle schools and three high schools, as well as funds for capacity enhancement, infrastructure management, and site acquisition. And this really is a wonderful example of the collaborative spirit of our stakeholders as they share with us as we all work towards supporting the success of our school system. And I thank you all again for your support. And at this time, I would like Mr. Joe Vidalich from the Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce to our lectern for some remarks.
Vice Chairman Darren Kofax, Chairman Moon, members of the Fairfax County School Board, good evening. My name is Joe Vidalich, and I am the Vice President of Government Relations at the Fairfax County Chamber of Converse, and I also was the campaign director for the bond committee. On behalf of our chairman, Len Forkis, I first wanted to thank the Fairfax County Public School System, this school board, and the entire team at FCPS for their dedication to the county's youth and our community. You all have been amazing stewards of some of the county's greatest resources, our students. And without you providing oversight and carrying hand over our school system, I doubt Fairfax County would be what it is today. I want to also thank you for the people you appointed to this committee. I worked with a dedicated group of community activists dedicated to Fairfax County and our schools. Now, as just was reported, the bond passed this year with 73.82% of the vote, though I agree, I proudly say that the county, the schools, and the students won the day, what I'm calling 74% of the vote. That means that 214,025 of our neighbors voted for the bond, representing the greatest number of votes cast in favor of the history of the referendum. This school bond provides funding for renovation, capacity enhancements, construction, and planning for more than 20 schools across the county. The value of FCPS facilities also extends far beyond the classroom, to our residents, our community at large, and our public school buildings every day for use in today's community. Thousands of community organizations use FPS F8A. The reason why the chamber and the business community support the initiative is simple: It makes good business sense. It's an investment in our future. Fairfax County has so many rich resources, but none are as important as our children and the world-class education that Fairfax County system provides. Therefore, on behalf of the committee, and the more than I say a dozen volunteers with countless hours of work, I say thank you for letting us be a part of this referendum. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your work. I ask for, at this time, could the school board members please come to the front risers? And for those members of the bond committee that were here, I will be presenting you certificates, so please wait till your name is called, and you can join, and we'll all take pictures together. Thank you. Colleen McAlter? Not here, we will make sure she gets her certificate. I understand many people wanted to come, but they had conflicting meetings. Jessica Bowser? Thank you, Jessica. Steve Bun? I don't think Steve is here. Jim Corcoran? Judith Fogel? Len Forkis? Chris Gaseif? Dawn Jones? Alan Christnon? Sue Langley? Maria Lawalt? Ramona Morrow? Betsy Schomacher? Hank Thomason? Tim Thompson? Joe Vidalich? Thank you so much. And Dana Weinberg? And thank you all again for your hard work and your service. We really appreciate it.
Please stay two for photo. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you again to the members on the bond committee. Let me ask both members to stay on the risers, please. The next order of business is recognition of Golden Wellness Awards, and let me call on Superintendent Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Tonight, we had a delightful reception, recognizing some wonderful folks all throughout our system for a very important award tonight. We are recognizing schools who are receiving tonight the Golden Wellness Award, and we have 114 schools throughout the division, throughout the entire county, that have won that award. That's very impressive, so congratulations to you. The award was developed by the FCPS Wellness Task Force in 2010 to promote the FCPS Wellness Policy. The policy addresses school board, student achievement goals 2.8 and goal 3.2. The first one being students will make healthy and safe life choices, and the second being students will be respectful and contributing participants in their school, community, country, and the world. And I think what's really important at these schools, really took the initiative, demonstrated a lot of leadership around and commitment around the overall health and well-being of our students and our employees, and I think that says a lot about the school, the culture, and the leadership at these schools. So, we're very, very proud to have an opportunity to recognize, I think, 74 that we have here tonight, and lots of great people here, so thank you all for being here tonight. And it gives me great pleasure to turn this program over to two people who are instrumental in developing and supporting this school award throughout our division, that's Susan Quinn and Penny McConnell. So, please, I guess, actually Penny or Susan, there you are, there you are.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Just a few comments. I know everyone's very anxious to come up and take pictures with our school board, so it won't take long, but in tradition of FCPS's acronym, happy, right? Golden stands for Giving Others Lifelong Desire for Exercise and Nutrition. That's what Golden stands for, so (laughs) I thought, I thought, how clever! So, thank you to the Wellness Task Force for coming up with that acronym. And then, just to simplify this whole process, the task force came up with this creative way for schools to submit their applications, their entries, online. So, the schools are able to submit their entries online so that the task force members can actually review and score all the evidence and documentation that everyone has submitted. So, this really, truly, is a wonderful program, and it supports the school board's wellness policy. So, I'm actually going to turn it over to Penny, and she's going to go ahead and introduce the task for member, task force members, and then recognize all the schools that are here with us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you, School Board, for allowing us to recognize the winners here, and Dr. Garza for your fine introduction and support. We, of course, have, are always excited to recognize the hard efforts of the schools, and I just want to take one minute to introduce a few of the task force members who are here. As with other recipients, some people have other conflicts, but we do have Elizabeth Payne, who's been one of the charter members, Noel, who's really been the one who's been hitting the bushes to get so many of you into this, and of course, Ani from my office. But our board is, our task force is made up of parents, principals, students, and representatives from the Health Department, our wellness liaisons in the schools, and others. Yeah, these three can stand, please. And of course, our little theme was developed by, many of you know Bunny Easter, who retired last year, and she's the one who really came up with it when we formed the award. But the winners have received their framed certificates as they came into the auditorium, and they will also get a matching icon for their home website. And what's exciting about this award is, as I've looked through the recipients in the last four years, is they've climbed up from Honorable Mention to Green to Red to Gold, which is wonderful, which shows the commitment of the school community and the administrators. So, without further ado, I will start recognizing the winners. I'm going to call them all out, although they are not all here because they all have worked hard for this. So, Cluster 1, Marty Smith, is he here, the Assistant Administrator? He was one of my original task force members, Marty. But Armstrong Elementary, as I call your names, you'll come forward, and I'm trying to figure out how we're going to line you all up, but you'll be cozy up here. Armstrong Elementary, these are the gold. Chesterbrook, Churchill, Clearview, Timber Lane, Herndon, and Longfellow are the gold. Drainsville, Great Falls were the red. Colvin Run, Franklin Sherman, Haycock, Herndon Elementary were the green, and the Honorable Mention were Herndon High and McLean High.
For the safety of every opening sprinter, I agree for one, two, three. One, two, three. One more, big smile, eyes wide open, one, two, three.
The task force is so excited that we have finally gotten high schools and secondary schools to buy into it, this year and last year, so it's really wonderful to see them. Cluster 2, and I think Tim Arrington's going to represent Cluster 2 today. Tim, good, okay. Gold, Fair Hill, Lemon Road, Louise Archer, Marshall Road, Pine Springs, Stanwood, Westlawn, Woodburn, Falls Church High, Madison High. The red, Freedom Hill, Thoreau, Cedar Lane. And the green will be Shreve Wood and Louise, sorry, Luther Jackson. The schools do not just fill in a scorecard, they have to document their activities. And their activities include health fairs. In fact, Fairview had one Friday night that had over 400 parents and students at it. They also document nutrition education, school gardens, and activities like that. So, they have to prove the documentation for the task force. Okay, Cluster 3, Doug Tyson. Okay. Gold, Canterbury Woods, Mantua, Old Creek, Sleepy Hollow, Wakefield Forest, Frost, and Stewart. Red, Brenmar, Columbia Elementary, Park Lawn, Poe, Montrose Alternative Learning Center. They've been a recipient every year, we're proud of them. Very proud of them. Suzanne and Del Terrace, Glen Forest, Glasgow Middle School, Woodson, and Honorable Mention is Holmes. Congratulations. This, this is our biggest cluster, so (laughs) needless to say. Doug's taking over to organize this. This is harder than completing the entry, I've decided.
One more. One, two, three. Okay. Eyes wide-eyed. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Cluster 3 had all the winners, didn't they? Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome, good. Thank you. It was nice that some students were here, too. See you next year. You're welcome. You're welcome. Cluster 4. Cluster four. Deborah Tyler. Okay. Golden Award. Hybla Valley, Island Creek, Lane, Lorton Station, Hayfield Secondary. Red, Bucknell, Gunston, Hayfield Elementary, Mount Vernon High School, West Potomac High School. Green, Washington Mill, Woodley Hills, Whitman Middle School, honorable mention Sandberg.
Everybody on this path can do halfway this way and squeeze in. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, one more, and I'm gonna take everyone. So we can identify everyone. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Cluster five. Frances Ivy, Assistant Superintendent. Okay, gold, Lynbrook, Newington Forest, Rose Hill, Silverbrook, Edison High School. Red, Bush Hill, Franconia, Lee High School. Green, Garfield, Saratoga, Key Middle School, Twain Middle School, and South County High School.
Okay, so you want to use our space nicely, but everybody from here, bring that way, squeeze in as much as you can. Go up there. And this side, turn this way, and squeeze in as much as you can. Let's see. All right, and we want you to take two photos of all, and then one, two, three. One, one, two, three. Okay, go. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations. Cluster six. Are you getting ready? Angela Atwater, Assistant Superintendent. Okay, gold, Fairview, Rolling Valley, West Springfield High School, Bonnie Bray, red, Orange Hunt, red, Sangster, West Springfield Elementary, Lake Braddock, red. Green is Laurel Ridge and Irving Middle School, and then honorable mention is White Oaks.
Beautiful bunch of people. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Cluster seven, Linda Burke, Assistant Superintendent. Gold, Colin Powell, Greenbrier East, Greenbrier West, Oak Hill, Union Mill. They're all shy, I think. Liberty Middle, Rocky Run Middle, Centerville High School, Chantilly High School. Red, Bull Run, Center Ridge, Franklin Middle School. Green, Daniels Run, Eagle View, Providence, and Mountain View. And last but not least, Cluster eight. Fabio Zuluaga, Assistant Superintendent. And the gold winners are Lake Anne, Sunrise Valley, Stone Middle School, South Lakes High School, Westfield High School. The red award, Crossfield, Cub Run, Deer Park, Fox Mill, London Town, Terracette, Waples Mill, and Hughes Middle School. Mr. Moon and the board and Dr. Garza, thank you so much. I know it would took time to do all the pictures, but it means a lot to all these schools. Thank you very, very much. Thanks, good to see you.
The board will now take a two-minute recess. The board is now back in the session. The next order of business is Fairfax County School Board Resolution on State Assessment and Accountability Reform. Let me call on Mr. McElven.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. So, let's see. So I move to pass the resolution on state assessment and accountability reform. Is there a second?
Could you read the whole resolution?
Oh, I agree. Okay. Fairfax County School Board Resolution on State Assessment and Accountability Reform. Whereas in recent years, the proliferation of high-stakes standardized testing and the increasing role played by those test scores in key educational policy decisions, while well-intentioned, has resulted in a narrowing of the instructional mission of schools, and caused a focus on compliance rather than on fostering a love of learning and instilling a culture of constant instructional improvement. And whereas Virginia's students must currently take 34 criterion-referenced SOL assessments between grades three and 11, greatly increasing the amount of time spent by students and teachers on taking and managing assessments rather than on learning and teaching, with little evidence that students are better prepared to succeed in college and in their chosen careers by having taken such a volume of tests, little research to verify the usefulness and accuracy of Virginia's method of relying upon SOL test results to measure growth and student achievement, and little research to verify that Virginia's method of measuring student growth provides a valid and reliable indicator of teacher, principal, and superintendent performance. And whereas the current standards of learning and their associated assessments are still largely focused on information recall and do not adequately address the acquisition and mastery of the skills required for students to be successful in the 21st century, such as innovation, literacy, collaboration, critical analysis, creative thinking, problem-solving, and communication. And whereas what occurs in classrooms every day should be student-centered and result in learning at a deep and meaningful level, with opportunities for students to cultivate their unique individual talents, provide options for students that are designed, to respect how they learn best, and embrace the concept that students can be both consumers and creators of knowledge, as opposed to the superficial level of learning that results from the current overemphasis on that which can be easily measured by standardized tests. And whereas we recognize the need for and support accountability and transparency in public schools, but believe that such accountability should be designed and appropriately assess the achievement of all students, provide educationally valuable information, recognize the roles of students, parents, teachers, and schools in those results, and which can be leveraged to improve educational policy and practice. Now, therefore, for it be resolved, the Fairfax County School Board calls upon the Virginia General Assembly and Virginia Board of Education to reexamine Virginia's public school assessments and the system of accountability for which they form the basis to ensure that the state's assessment system provides educationally valuable information, is reliable, valid, fair, and non-intrusive on the learning process, and allows for the measurement of the acquisition and mastery of 21st century skills. And also be it resolved that such a reexamination to improve the current accountability and assessment system should potentially include a consideration of the use of statistically valid sampling techniques as utilized by assessments, such as the NAEP, opportunities to allow students to forego standardized assessments in certain years based on previous high achievement levels, and expanded use of internationally benchmarked assessments as a substitute for SOL assessments. I so move.
Both by Mr. McElven and second by Mr. Velkow. And Mr. McElven, you want to speak on your motion?
First of all, I will just say that we do pay by the word, so thank you for listening. But most importantly, I do want to mention that this board has set it as a division-wide goal this year to develop better measures of student achievement, and so we're going to be working on that, and hopefully by mid-next year be able to present something to our state legislators to give them a concrete idea of what we're looking for when we say we want to reform the SOLs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElven. And Mr. Velkow, you want to speak on your second? Okay, Mrs. McLachlan. Did you want to speak? Go ahead, Mrs. McLachlan, and then I'll call on Mrs. Schurz.
I just want to share with the community how concerned I am that when I watch even my children coming through the system and how much it's changed in the 13 years since my son started at kindergarten, I can't think of anything that is more important and imperative that we, as a Fairfax County School Board, truly lobby the General Assembly and hopefully as we head down to the Virginia School Board Association... as we head down to the Virginia School Board Association Annual Meeting in Williamsburg later this week, we have got to bring along the other school boards around the Commonwealth. We are losing the passion and the joy that the students and the teachers have for education. And it's, we talk about where we're at a critical juncture with our budget crisis. We are at an equally critical juncture in terms of losing a generation of kids who will not understand the joy of learning. And so I am so pleased that tonight we are passing this resolution, but now it's going to be about action, and I'm excited to join my colleagues in really seeing how we can make something happen from this because I really am very concerned. And I will say one last thing. The Virginia Board of Education keeps defending these assessments. When Thomas Jefferson, one of the best high schools in the United States, has huge rates of only pass and not pass advance, there's a problem with the tests. And instead, what I heard was a defending of how rigorous these assessments must be. And so I really hope we can also be partnering with our Virginia Board of Education to get a more realistic view of exactly what these assessments are and what are they supposed to measure, because if Thomas Jefferson kids can't pass advance on it, then something's wrong with the test.
I have Mr. Schultz to be followed by Ms. Sines.
Yes, just like it's our job and our position to go to the legislators in Richmond and say, you know, "All of you who just ran and were just either elected or re-elected or are going to be running again here shortly, who included SOL reform as a part of your platform for your campaigns, the time has come to put the words into action." And we, as the largest school board in the Commonwealth, are looking to the legislators to finally step up to the plate and relieve us of these SOLs. But just so too do we look for meaningful assessments that provide meaningful data. So too do I think it's the educators in the classroom, the teachers, the IAs. You know, you need to roll up and bookend this, and you need to be talking to your principals, and you need to be talking to your cluster staff, and also engage and inform us when we're doing too many assessments. So this is a holistic solution. This is our part of the discussion, but this is going to take everybody from, you know, the educator in the classroom to our legislators in Richmond and us in between to fix this problem, because the other issue here is teacher workload. And when kindergarten teachers are broken because they spend all their time assessing the children instead of teaching the children, something is wrong with the system, and it's time to fix it, and it's time to fix it now.
Besides.
Yes, thank you. I just, I wanted to thank staff for the language here. I seem to recall sometime in the last couple months, I threw together a draft of this of my own, and this is significantly better, so thank you. I had my own ideas, but this is really, this says exactly everything that we need to say. It's a very responsible call for reform. The pendulum nationally is finally swinging away from the insanity of testing every child, every subject, every year. High-stakes tests make no sense, and people are finally realizing that. We are joining school boards, educators, parents, and students around the Commonwealth when we approve this tonight. And the time is clearly now. It was an issue in the recent elections, as people have already mentioned, and we have to hit the ground running on this. And we in Fairfax County should always lead. We should always put our shoulders to the wheel and help make things happen in Virginia. So, thank you very much. I am so excited to be supporting this.
Mr. Velkow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to thank the superintendent for comments that she made to our legislators last week, because she said that she was very comfortable going to Richmond and speaking with legislators, and I think that'll be very, very helpful. And I would just add that I hope you can, Dr. Garza, I hope you can call on us if there are things that we can go down to Richmond with you and Mr. Malloy and be advocating for things. I think you'll find many of us, if not all of us, would like to help out here.
Okay, with that, let me call for the vote on the Fairfax County School Board Resolution on State Assessment and Accountability Reform. All those in... Dr. Velkow? My fault?
I apologize. I thought there were more people, you know, whatever, you know. Just very quickly, because I can't, I must weigh in on this, and thank you, Mr. Velkow, for your comments, and I didn't want to get in front of any board member, and so I was kind of being, sitting and waiting. I do think it's now. I think it's time, and I want the public to be very, we want to be very clear with the public that we want to be held accountable. We believe it's appropriate for us to be held accountable, but we do believe that there are better ways to do that without completely letting testing be the driver of our educational system. We believe that the most appropriate assessments and best assessments are those done by classroom teachers in classrooms, but we do think there's reasonable and appropriate scientifically, you know, supported ways of assessing our schools and making sure that we're being held accountable using norm-referenced or using samples, samples, just as Nate does. So we do believe that there's interest. In fact, I heard today on the national news, Arnie Duncan's really being pushed on this, Secretary Arnie Duncan, and so I think there is a national conversation underway. We believe that we need to lead on this issue, and so I'm very grateful to our school board for taking the lead, adopting this resolution, assuming it'll be adopted here in just a moment, and yes, we'll be taking it to our legislators. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Velkow. With that, let me really call for the vote on the resolution. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the resolution passes, and thank you. Next. Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have a presentation to the school board, with the first one being citizen participation. Fairfax County residents who would like to address... The school board should arrange to be placed on the speakers list by signing up online at www.fcpss.edu or by calling the school board office at 571-423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings. Any such concern should be directed to appropriate school principal or other school officials. Citizens are encouraged to write to the school board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the board. Tonight, one citizen has signed up to address the board, Mr. Stephen Greenberg.
Dr. Garza, Chairman Moon, esteemed school board members, the dashing and distinguished Mr. Ash, bonus adjective. My name is Steve Greenberg. I come forward this evening representing over 4,500 educators with the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers in regards to Agenda Item 6.106, school calendar. First of all, and I want to be very clear, Dr. Pajarda, and her staff should be commended on their efforts thoroughly to engage the employee organizations on this topic. Our meeting with Human Resources earlier this fall took several hours. She and her staff listened attentively to everyone. I'm certain that the draft before you reflects the combined lobby of all. We also appreciate that she has taken the initiative to propose continuing with the teacher-directed workday in the fall of next year, and we support that recommendation. This board has expressed a desire for this in the past and displayed that they value the importance of protecting teachers' unencumbered planning time, which we are still in very short supply of, and we appreciate your focus on that. I will address this issue further soon when our member perspective survey is completed, and I'll report back to you and the public on any progress we have made concerning workload since this summer. You're doing too many e-card assessments still, Mrs. Schultz. Sorry, I'm sorry, I thought she asked me for that. I realize that you are all quite busy with the budget right now, so we're happy to help out. I do not want you distracted off the budget right now. As for the school calendar proposal, beyond supporting the need for a regular teacher-directed workday in the fall, our membership supports observing Veterans Day instead of Columbus Day, our current survey data reflects that so far, and this is pretty much what we've heard from teachers in buildings as we've talked to them and done surveys over the past couple of years. Mostly, if everything else is the same in regards to pluses and minuses when assessing whether to go with Columbus Day or Veterans Day, for example, spouses off versus it's time to go visit colleges, federal holiday versus sports leagues, and everybody's different. Everybody's got their own reason for liking one versus the other, then I think it should come down to what is best for kids and what's right. Columbus is a polarizing figure in American history, veterans are not. Veterans should be honored every day of the year, not just on the holidays. So I really don't buy the whole, "But if we don't have school on Veterans Day, then we cannot honor veterans properly." We could honor them most properly by acknowledging them and the importance of the day. Honor the day. Honor the significance. Veterans Day is certainly about veterans, but it's about more: citizenship, loyalty to country, honoring those who gave, remembering, community service, history. It's a day for all of us to role model for our students. Why would teachers want to observe Veterans Day instead of Columbus Day? A better question would be, why wouldn't we? Considering the importance of the military in our community, I think it's imperative to honor them. We need their support as they need ours. Finally, I noticed that we have many no-changes-to-some policies that are coming up under the consent agenda, specifically those relating to employees and employee organizations. It's good not to make adjustments to those now, as we need to focus on the budget and workload this year. I appreciate your approach, Dr. Garza, to that. Thank you. Let's keep the main people, the main people. Thank you for your service and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Next, we have a student representative matters, Mr. Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So last Tuesday, we had our November SAC meeting, and we focused our majority of our time on the discussion of sleep and layer start times. We had a great presentation about both the benefits of extra sleep and the drawbacks to when you, what happens when you don't get enough sleep. So it was really informative, really interesting, and I thoroughly enjoyed that. Unfortunately, I had to leave before we got to the student discussion, but I am looking forward to reading through the notes and getting caught up and reaching out to the students who I have direct contact with and finding out exactly what they thought of the discussions. The second thing I'd like to point out today is the TJ CubeSat. Normally, I like to focus on FCPS as a whole, but I think this is really cool, and I've been hearing about this as a freshman, since I was a freshman. So without, I'm going to read through the actual news announcement. A satellite developed and built by approximately 50 students from Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology over the past eight years, the first ever built by high school students, is scheduled to be launched into orbit by NASA tomorrow evening at 7:30 p.m. The satellite, known as TJ CubeSat, is one of 20 satellites selected by NASA as part of its CubeSat launch initiative, which spread, which includes cube-shaped research satellites that weigh approximately three pounds, known as nanosatellites. TJ CubeSat will serve primarily as an educational outreach tool and features a website that hosts live telemetry, such as voltages, currents, temperatures, and other system status information available to the general public, along with its history and pertinent documents. TJ alumnus Jason Athier proposed the project as a result of an internship he served with Orbital Sciences Corporation. Teacher Adam Kemp then developed a course in systems engineering that would focus on the design and construction of the satellite. A $30,000 donation from Orbital Sciences Corporation went towards the purchase of the CubeSat kit, which formed the foundation of the satellite. Orbital has provided the resources needed for the flight hardware, testing facilities for the finished spacecraft, and engineering mentorship by its employees. Since 2006, teams of TJ students have been working on the design, construction, testing, and integration of TJ CubeSat. The launch will take place from NASA facility at Wallops Island in Virginia. I just think that's so cool. So that'll be launching tomorrow evening, and if you can find a high place in your area, you can actually go and watch, watch the launch. So that's, that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ash. Before, next order of business is action items, with the first one being FY 2014 Audit Plan, before I call on Mr. Stork. Is there any Boy Scout in the audience? If there is, would you, would you stand? Okay, one in the corner, would you, would you stand and identify yourself? John Smore from 15, 1543, 33, which is where, based? A Montu elementary school. Okay, thank you, thank you so much for being here. The other gentleman here? 1533, the same troop? Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you. Oh, there's another one, all right. Okay, 1143 from Vienna. Thank you. Any other? Boy Scout, Girl Scout? Any other person to be recognized? Okay, then we'll go to Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the FY 2014 Audit Plan as detailed in the Agenda Item.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. Mr. Stork, you want to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an annual process that we follow. We have an audit plan that we organize and put together, and the Board has had discussions on this at our work sessions. The purpose of the audit plan is for the Board's Audit Committee to review and assess the internal financial operations of FCPS, and we do that in a lot of different ways. Teresa Weatherman is our Board staff member. We have kind of some core areas that we do of the audit. We audit school activity funds, professional development. Administrative duties are part of what the Audit Committee members do. They have things that they have to do internally. They provide a lot of support to, just more of FYI support, more of coaching and guidance support about how to make sure our internal procedures are handled properly and thoroughly. We have a waste, fraud, and abuse hotline, which we get calls on, and of which recently we had a call that has resulted in some actions which were reported on in the papers. We also have other new items that we've added for this year that we think are important to consider more, I guess, thoroughly. One is following up on a bank reconciliation audits that we do and working with our finance department. We have probably our most, our biggest project this year is a comprehensive, comprehensive division-wide risk assessment. We've done some risk assessments in the past, but this time we're going to do a much more thorough job. We're probably going to involve an outside consultant to work with us to identify all the different potential risks and then kind of weigh those risks so we can assess where we should devote more time or resources to minimize any negative impacts that they might have on the system, as well as to potentially put aside money for, like an insurance pool, if you will, to make sure that we can cover those risks if they should occur. We do continuous audit on procurement cards, and we have, we do some business process audits, as well as we are looking at the medical system and at our construction dollars and Monopol revenue. Those are just kind of the key things. We have some follow-up work that the Audit Committee is going to do with our fundraising. Mostly, we have PTAs and Vans and other organizations that are affiliated with us, and we just want to make sure that they understand the proper way to raise money and how to account for that. Those are essential ways that we can ensure that monies that parents donate and others donate from the community are spent wisely and properly, as well as to follow up on previous audits, make sure there, the changes and the recommendations that were followed upon were handled properly. So there's a lot of things that they do. It's a very small shop, but we are pleased at the work that we've done in the past, and we're looking forward to doing frankly more with this area, and we have some internal discussions right now in the Audit Committee about how best to do that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Let me call on Mrs. Strauss. You want to speak on your second?
Thank you. I just, Mr. Stork covered just about all of it. The one last little piece is there is a little bit of extra time in case the Board finds other items that you all want the Audit Committee to take a look at during the year, so we always leave a little, little bit of space in case you all find other things that you would like to be examined. So it is up to the Board to set these plans. Thank you.
Mrs. McLachlan.
Both Mr. Stork and Ms. Strauss and I comprise the three-person Audit Committee, and at our most recent meeting, we were discussing with Teresa Weatherman the fact that we are losing one of our staff members in her group. And as Mr. Stork alluded to, it is a very tiny staff, as it is, for the size and complexity of this school system. of the school system. And so I wanted to share with my colleagues that I am extremely pleased that this audit plan includes a division-wide, comprehensive risk assessment effort. I think this will hopefully bring us in the direction, as one of the largest school systems in the United States, that we need a more robust audit program. We truly, it's not about waste, fraud, and abuse so much as we need to be looking at effectiveness and efficiency of our programs. We're going to continue to be stretched with our dollars. I heard a statistic the other day in a meeting that are entering kindergarten classes, over 30% students who are qualifying for free and reduced lunch. That's substantial. So we're going to have to, as a school system, continue to figure out how best to deliver a quality public education. So to my colleagues, and I want to give a shout out to Dr. Garza because I know that she, in our meetings, also expressed her support and desire for this comprehensive risk assessment so that we can figure out how best is a division to, what I hope is, expand the audit program to make us that much better with, with our limited funds that we have. So, thank you.
Mrs. Schurz.
Just very briefly, because I know that many members in the public, this is a high-watch item. Just because we, we are approving an audit plan doesn't mean that the end of crafting the audit work is over. And I think that Dr. Garza has certainly heard a lot on her initial listening tours, and there's some members of the board, and Ms. McLaughlin just mentioned that we, we still have more work to do. So I think that crafting and filling positions that we're losing and how the Audit Committee at the, or at the audit function will ultimately look is not yet finished. So I don't, I don't want anybody to take away that a, a passage of an audit plan for a calendar year or for a fiscal year means that we won't continually seek improvement, you know, in a constant move forward to do, to do better.
Mr. Velkop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually just want to take a brief moment to do a little education of the public. One of the terms that we heard was procurement cards, or as they're known in the trade, P-cards. And when I started on the Audit Committee last year, I, I had no idea what that was. I assumed that they were little index cards that, that everybody had to file in all the schools, and I didn't know what was going on. Mind you, I spent four years filing index cards in a library. So actually, as it turns out, it's actually very simple. They're credit cards. They're credit cards so that people in schools can make the purchases that they need to make for procurement. So that's why they're called procurement cards.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, let me call for the vote on the motion that the school would approve FY 2014 Audit Plan as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes. Next, we have a policy 8561 Child Care Services, and let me call on Mrs. Schurz for the motion.
I move that the school board adopt policy 8561 Child Care Services as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Schurz, you want to speak on your motion?
Sure. Just to explain to the public, we are required to look at policies every so often, and they're presented to the board as a no change. And that gives us the opportunity, if nothing has changed over a period of a couple of years, we're just reaffirming policies. And the reason I pulled this from a consent agenda and reviewed it with staff was to make sure that it didn't have any language which had to do with some of the work that some of us have been advocating to look at the way that our SAC rooms are utilized. And at my last count, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to pop quiz Mr. Plattenberg, but at my last count, there are 256 classrooms in our elementary schools. 11 are trailers, 245 are in the brick-and-mortar schools, which are used for childcare services after, before and after school. And I'm very pleased that Dr. Garza and Mr. Plattenberg, as the COO, have taken on board and looking at an MOU as a way to explore those, those SAC rooms and better use for the schools. So the, again, this is another one that even though we're approving it, the language does not reside within this policy itself, so I don't have a problem reaffirming it. But the work is still going on in the background for the wisest and most efficient use of our facilities. And having 256 classrooms that potentially we can improve and have a more efficient use of is important, but that language does not reside in this policy, so we did not have any changes to this policy.
Thank you. We have Mrs. Smith next. You want to, if not, any other board member who want to speak on this policy? Then let me call for the vote on the motion that the school would adopt policy 8561 Child Care Services as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes. Next, we have a confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues they were discussing in the closed meeting. These issues may include the action taken regarding students who have been recommended for expulsion by the Division Superintendent. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. The first motion comes from Mrs. Smith.
I move to expel a student for bringing a weapon to school property.
Second? And seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous with Mr. Stork away from the table. The motion passes. The next motion comes from Mr. Velkop.
I move to expel a student for possession of illegal drugs at school with the intent to distribute.
And seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, Schurz, McElvin, Smith, Terona Kofek, Moon, Hines, Reed, Velkop, and opposing, none, and abstaining, is McLaughlin with Mr. Stork away from the table. The motion passes. We have another motion from Mrs. Schurz.
I move to excuse from attendance at school certain students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1-254B1.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Velkop, Reed, Moon, Terona Kofek, Smith, McElvin, Schurz, Evans, Strauss opposing and abstaining, Hines, and McLaughlin. The motion passes with Mr. Stork away from the table. Next, we have a consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most, most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of November 7, 2013 regulations for the meeting. 5.02, confirm the separations for the period beginning October 1, 2013, and ending October 31, 2013 as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, adopt the policy 2158, student employment, policy 2418, promotion retention grading and graduation requirements, and policy 3201, program of studies as detailed in the agenda item. 5.04, approve and adopt the resolution requesting that the Board of Supervisors issue and sell school bonds in the amount of $155 million on behalf of the Fairfax County Public Schools. 5.05, approve changes to the list of middle and high school course offerings for 2013, 2014 school year as recommended by the Course Review Committee as detailed in the agenda item. 5.06, appoint individuals to serve on the committee as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing the objection, the consent agenda is approved. Moving along, we now have a new business. The following are new business agenda items, and, and there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, approve the 2014, 2015 school calendar as detailed in the agenda item. 6.02, award a contract for operational maintenance and testing services for Guntz and Waste Water Treatment Facility to the lowest responsible and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.03, authorize step to negotiate a professional services contract with the select firms for architectural design of capital construction projects, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer contracts on behalf of the school board. 6.04, authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services in consultation with the Division Counsel to negotiate, execute, and administer on behalf of the school board on energy conservation program contract with Senegistic Incorporated. 6.05, award a contract for the Woolon Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsible and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.06, adopt a resolution approving the proposed public use of the property as an elementary school and directing Division Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services in consultation with a legal counsel for the school division to acquire the property for this public purpose by condemnation or other means. There will be a public hearing on this topic scheduled on December 5. The speakers' list will open tomorrow morning, November 19, and will close at 4:30 p.m. on December 4. Fairfax County residents who would like to speak may sign up online at www.fcpse.edu or by calling the school board office at 571-423-1075. Next, we have Superintendent Matters and Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I know that earlier tonight, we recognized members of the 2013 School Bond Committee, but I, I think it warrants, again, our, our appreciation, and we're indebted to the leadership of that committee for their hard work, but we're also very, very grateful to our community for their support or the bond. You just have to frequent our schools to know that there's very definitely the need, so we're very grateful. I'd like to also acknowledge Dr. Mari Asti, the principal at Mosby Woods Elementary School. She was named the University of Virginia's Distinguished Principal of the Year. And Dr. Asti was honored at UVA two weeks ago by UVA President Dr. Teresa Sullivan. It's a very prestigious honor, so we're very, very proud of her. And it's a wonderful recognition also of her school. And Mr. Ash, I'm so, I'm glad that you read the email because I was going to read it, and you did a great job on that. But I will tell you, the TJ CubeSat, my goodness, I'm, I was very impressed with it. But I do want to, again, congratulate the TJ students that were involved, the principal, Dr. Evan Glazer, the staff, and particularly the teacher, Adam Kemp, for their very, very hard work. What a, what an impressive honor, first ever developed by high school students. We're continuing the listening tour. I'll be with Kathy Smith on Monday night at Rocky Run at 6:30. We hope to see a lot of parents and, and other interested community members and staff will be there to learn and listen. And then a couple of final comments. I, I know it's no surprise to everyone in the community, I think, that we are facing very difficult budget times ahead. We're projecting a deficit for the fiscal year 15. And I know those conversations create a lot of anxiety and angst throughout our organization and certainly throughout the community. So I just want our employees to know that we're mindful, very mindful of those stressors. The stressors being the contemplation of, of reductions and possible reductions, but also workload. We're very committed to alleviating as much of that stress on our teachers as we possibly can. We're committed to that. And I'm also want to thank the efforts of our principals and our other leaders throughout the system and all of their works to help mitigate and alleviate some of that, you know, the workload issues and also just some of the stressors that are on our employees throughout the system. We will find a way. We will get through this. And as I tell folks, we will have school next year. That's one thing I can promise. Finally, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. This will be our last board meeting before Thanksgiving. I have family coming to Virginia to help us enjoy our first-ever Virginia Thanksgiving. But I'm, I just want to thank this board. We're very thankful to be here and very thankful for the very warm welcome that we received. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Garza. I think, I think Chairman Bloba from the County Board of Supervisors has once asked us to not to say deficit, hundred, deficit of $140 million, but project, you said that. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I heard the right thing, because we do not have a deficit. We're projecting the deficit. All right, thank you. Next, we have a board matters. We have reports. I'm sorry. We have reports, and let me. Okay, we'll start from the November 7th. I know that board members, we are ahead of our schedule, but there's no reason to try to make up at the time. What do you, what do reports? November 7th. Is it, Mr. Kofek?
Thank you, Chairman Moon. On the November 7th work session, and we discussed the 2014, 2015 calendar. Our discussion points mainly focused on the area of Columbus Day versus Veterans Day as a student holiday, the teacher-directed workday prior to the beginning of the year, and our desire to begin Labor Day prior to Labor Day. So that is my succinct encapsulation of our conversation.
Okay, thank you. With that, Mr. Stork on audit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We covered one of the items tonight, which is the audit plan. Additionally, we spent a fair amount of time covering the, the comprehensive risk assessment and how we were going to approach that. We talked about staffing for, in the audit area, how we should approach it, what else we need to do to kind of brief up what we know is an important part of our operation. And we're looking for essentially other, other areas that we should consider for audit purposes. Those are the principal items we talked.
Mr. Stork, does that include those on November 11?
I, I was really covering the, those have been the themes in the general discussions of the Audit Committee for the past six weeks, I would say.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stork. Let me call on Mrs. Smith on the operational expectations from the November 11th and the governance.
Okay, I'm going to report about the, the govern-
I'm sorry, governance.
Yes, governance. I feel like I'm reporting this over and over again, because I said we were going to talk about it, and we talked about it. We looked at the operational expectations for facilities and transportation and reviewed that, and then we made a change to that operational expectation and added two new values. And we just had an update about the other work of the Governance Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Let me call Ms. Evans on the reports from work sessions on November 11th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did, prior to the governance work session, look at the Financial Planning, Financial Administration, and Asset Protection Operational Expectations Monitoring Report. We discussed it, and we did approve that at that work session. We later also had a facilities work session where we received a presentation on the renovation queue and looked at a proposed schedule and timeline for developing criteria for the renovation queue in anticipation of an assessment of unrenovated schools and ranking those schools. We also had a work session on food and nutrition services with a report from our consultants who have been working on this issue, Prismatic Services. This was a 146-page report with a great deal of information and recommendations in it. We had a discussion for around three hours. Our, as a result, we are going to receive from staff both a response and preparation of a plan for implementing some of the specific recommendations in there, and as well the consultant plan to come back and, and give us their thoughts on an implementation strategy. We also will receive a draft language for possible consideration- We also will receive a draft language for possible consideration by the school board on the issue of additives and preservatives.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Let me call on Mrs. Smith on era comedian's superintendent's evaluation.
We had a meeting for about an hour before our last meeting, and we're continuing to do our work on the superintendent's evaluation that would start July of 2014, so we're continuing our good work on that process.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Let me call on Mr. Anna Kofax on instruction and the forum discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On November 14th, an instructional work session was held, and a robust conversation ensued to discuss the tipping point study, which basically focuses on the effects of high poverty within our school. We also talked about poverty's effect on our achievement gap, and staff outlined a plan about their continuing efforts as well as new efforts focusing on this issue. And earlier this evening, a forum session was held in relation to the students' rights and responsibilities, excuse me, and the desire was to refer this to a work session, and it was basically to have a conversation about the authority that the board has when we have to find special circumstances in our student discipline cases where a recommendation for expulsion is mandatory under the law. And it was decided this evening that we would bring this to a work session.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Anna Kofax. Let me call on Ms. Heinz on public engagement.
I thought you'd never ask, Mr. Moon. I've been on the edge of my seat, thank you. We did, earlier today, Public Engagement Committee met, and we discussed the new client communication guidelines, which staff are working on to streamline our communication with the community. Still a work in progress, and so we talked a little bit about that. We will continue to discuss how that's going and possibly survey board members at some point on how everyone thinks it's going. We talked about community outreach. Staff has also been very helpful in addressing some of the issues with our newsletters, and there's a new plan, which we will also let board members know about at an upcoming work session. We discussed district budget meetings. Some of us, some of us board members are having meetings in our magisterial districts to talk about the budget, and we talked about how that's going. We had a Student Leadership Development Program update, and the one thing I want to make sure that board members here tonight is that we are expected to select our students. Each one of us selects a student, and that selection should be made by this Wednesday, which is the day after tomorrow, and so far, only three board members have finished that process. So if you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinz. I've done my duty. I have sent in my choice. Right, thank you. And let me call on Mr. Velikop to go back to our November 11th budget work session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we had a brief budget session during the work session last Monday, and Dr. Garza and the finance team brought forward some additional menu items for potential cuts that we had not seen in October. We also saw the agenda for the fiscal forecast meeting that we will have with the Board of Supervisors a week from tomorrow. Ms. Heinz, in the meantime, has made a suggestion that we come up with some talking points, and I am in the process of preparing those, and we'll be distributing those and asking for comment before we finalize them. And then finally, I just want to say that, you know, any good composer's toolkit includes repetition as an important psychological device, so I'm going to do a little repetition, and I'm going to note that Dr. Garza chose her words very carefully. She said that we have a projected deficit, which we understood from the chairman of the Board of Supervisors. When we say just a deficit, it creates an incorrect impression in the public. So we should all be training ourselves to use the word projected deficit. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Velikop. Now next, we have a board matters. I am going to be asking Mr. Ash to go first.
I just wanted to add on that I, Dr. Mari Asti was actually my elementary principal from grades three through six, so that's very cool to hear about her award. And also, just Mr. Kemp and his oversight of the projects is just one instance of what teachers at TJ and teachers in the county are willing to do to help our students. And the teachers, I've always had the feeling that with very few exceptions, the teachers in this county really want to see the students succeed and are willing to devote large amounts of their own time, not on the clock, to making sure that these students succeed. And I really love that about our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Next, let me call on Mr. Anna Kofax.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I had a busy two weeks with many wonderful meetings. I had a lovely and moving Veterans' Day. I attended that at Lee High School, where several members of the Springfield community were there, as well as the girls choir sang and as well as the string quartet. So there was a great turnout there at Lee High School, and it was a beautiful and moving day. I also met with Boy Scout Troop 1145 in Springfield, and they told me it was going to be a low-key conversation, and it was, where we talked about budget, later start times, and their philosophy, our philosophy of IB versus AP. So just little topics. They were informed, they were great, and it was engaging, so they kept me on my toes for certain. I attended with several of my colleagues the principal and librarian's dinner, where Dr. Garza gave a great keynote speech. I took my legislator, George Barker, to Bush Hill, and we had a fabulous tour of that school earlier last week, so that was wonderful. Thank you, Senator Barker, for attending. I attended with Mr. Moon a student exchange program, students from Kobe, Japan, were in a cultural tour of the U.S., and they put on a lovely program with song, dance, and a cultural experience at Hayfield Secondary. And earlier today, Chairman Moon and Ms. McLaughlin and I attended a meeting at George Mason University, Fairfax Futures, where Dr. Mark Ginsberg and the author of Mind in the Making, many of us have read that book, Alan Golinsky, she talked about the seven essential skills for student success, and it was an informative session, and, you know, if you haven't read that book, I highly suggest you go back and look at it, and this, right here, Mind in the Making, it basically talks about the seven essential life skills, and the earlier our children can, you learn them and know how to effectively utilize these skills, they will be better students and all grow up to be better educate, and grow up to be, you know, better productive members. And finally, a congratulations to Edison High School student, Mr. Lewis Colson, who came in first overall in the state cross-country championships in Oatlands last week. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
I just want to repeat what Dr. Garza said, and I'm trying not to let the competitive part of me come out, because I have asked how many people showed up at the listening tours in other districts. Come on, Sully, we need a good turnout Monday, November 25th at 6:30 PM at Rocky Run. Please come out. You have a great opportunity to talk with Dr. Garza, and we hope you fill the cafeteria, gym, the gymnasium at Rocky Run, so I hope to see you there. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McElven.
I'll be there, Mrs. Smith. I heard you promised me dinner, so.
Uh-oh.
I look forward to that. Two weeks ago on Friday, I held my student leadership, or student advocacy and innovation workshop. I was very pleased to have Dr. Pajardo, Megan, Sandy, and Pat come out to hear what the students had to say. They gave us four recommendations that we should think about working on over the coming year. One is homework load, one is stress and stress management, one is teacher collaboration, and the last one was bathroom infrastructure. So, as you know, I've always been a big proponent of that. So we look forward to working on those issues, and I appreciate the students for coming out for that event, and I couldn't have done it without Pam and Melanie. Second, we had our legislative briefing last Thursday evening. It was by far the biggest turnout we've ever had. I think we only had maybe three or four of our legislators not show up, which is really a great showing on their behalf, and we do hope that they continue to work with us as they advocate for us in Richmond. And then finally, I look forward to seeing my colleagues in Williamsburg. I'll be sure to bring my camera, so don't eat too much.
Thank you, Mr. McElven. We have a Mrs. Strauss.
And I would like to thank the Sangster Elementary School community for an unbelievable Veterans' Day activity. I lost track. I tried to count how many parents were there. I would say maybe close to 200. A service member from each of the services was there. The wife of the music teacher who is in the Navy is a first-class musician, first-class. Her rendition of God Bless America was just unbelievable, so very moving. The handbell choir, the children singing was really a phenomenal event. And I want to thank Mr. Greenberg for his comments, the FCFT president, tonight about Veterans' Day, and my continued advocacy that we see that put back on our school calendar as a holiday. I do wish my colleagues well at VSBA. I will miss you and not be joining you this year because I have other obligations at home, but you guys are going to have a wonderful time, learn some stuff, bring some great stuff back. I do want to say to the Willow Springs parents with whom I've met on your math concerns, I very much appreciate your time, as well as the Fairfax Education Committee on math, science, and sleep issues. It was very nice seeing my in-laws and hearing the anecdotal comment over the last several days that, boy, your children go to school too early, and they don't know anything about what we're doing, so. And then, lastly, I'm looking forward to a Thanksgiving lunch at Union Mill Elementary tomorrow, a little bit early, and meeting with the Decoding Dyslexia Group as we continue to work with you and Dr. Garza and Instructional Services and Special Services to meet the needs of students with disabilities in our community. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody, because we won't see you before then.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I very much enjoyed attending the Student Advocacy and Innovation Workshop as organized by Mr. McElven. Thank you for doing that. I was very impressed with the ideas that the students brought to us and all the energy in the room. It was a very exciting and informative event, and I think that they brought us some very actionable items, you know, particularly on things like homework load and stress. And in light of that, the Annandale High School students at that event talked about how they had been having a, were about to have a laugh more, stress less week at Annandale High School, and they talked about how they were going to have music in different parts of the day. They had a yoga class coming up. I think they had some affirmative Post-it notes. The culinary arts students were planning to do smiley face cookies. And then I did attend the Friday session with a very powerful speaker, a young man who talked about his own struggles with depression and attempted suicide. So I think it was a great week, and the students were hoping that we could roll that out, or at least encourage that type of an event, a week-long event countywide. So I wanted to congratulate Annandale High School in particular for holding that week-long event. I was very pleased to attend a dinner for, of the Hispanics Against Child Abuse and Neglect last Friday. It was a great event, recognizing supporters and volunteers for a very worthy group, so it was great to get together with people who feel passionately about such an important issue. I was pleased to take my legislator and my predecessor on this board, Kay Corey, to Stewart High School, a school that she knows extremely well, but nonetheless, to take her there for Take Your Legislator to School Day. So we enjoyed her company there. I am going to enjoy going to VSBA with many of my colleagues. I hope to see all of you there. I want to remind people that we have coming up the Emerging Minority Leaders Conference, sponsored by the FCCPTA. That's going to be at Edison High School on Saturday, this coming Saturday? Is this coming Saturday? This coming Saturday from 8:30 to 11:00 AM. I'll be attending that, and I hope to see many of my colleagues there for that. And last but not least, I wanted to say congratulations to the Falls Church High School Jaguar Football Team. They won their regional playoffs against Albemarle on Friday night after a season of being undefeated at home, and this was particularly exciting because they had not been in the playoffs since the 1970s, and so this was a particularly exciting and important win. They head to the quarterfinals against Massaponics this Friday. Go Jaguars! And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. First, I would like to congratulate Justin Paul, a student at Colvin Run Elementary School. He is qualified as one of the 10 students in the age-nine group in the 2014 All-American Chess Team, so that's quite an honor. So Justin Paul, we'll be waiting to see how well you do. And we had a number of Longfellow students who were recognized at the Model United Nations Competition at George Washington University. Nat Buchanan from Longfellow was named Best Delegate for his role as the Defense Minister of India on the India and Pakistan Joint Crisis Committee. Camille Richter was Best Delegate honors for her role as the Shah of Iran in the Iranian Hostage Crisis, and Ellie Hall was honored for her role representing Equatorial Guyana in the African Union Committee. You talk about higher-level thinking skills? There you have it. I also want to congratulate the Thomas Jefferson students again. I know the satellite project has been ongoing for a number of years, and this is such an exciting accomplishment for our students, so it's great. I want to congratulate the Herndon High School students who were inducted into the National English Honor Society. I got to participate in that. We had a Cluster One meeting, invited all of our PTA presidents to talk about the budget, and I will be attending a lot more PTA meetings to talk about the budget, and this is high school theater season again. Throughout November, pretty much all of our high schools are putting on their fall plays, so I have been attending many, many plays in the schools throughout the region, Fairfax County Public Schools, Arlington County, some of our private schools, Montgomery County, and DC, so it's been very exciting to see our wonderful student productions, and happy Thanksgiving to all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. McLaughlin, next.
How timely that our colleague, Mr. Stork, Mr. Abraham Lincoln himself, just sent us a lovely email about the power of Lincoln's words, the brevity of Gettysburg Address. So now I feel the challenge, see, how brief can I possibly deliver the little soundbites of information that I wanted to share with my colleagues about, and the public on some important issues. So, number one, I was with Mr. McElven, as noted, for his student leadership seminar, and I just want to emphasize that the students spoke so powerfully about homework and stress load and what it does to inhibit their education and learning. And so I really look forward to, Ms. Heinz and I have arranged to talk with Dr. Garza on this issue, and then to bring it as a forum topic with our colleagues, because we need to circle back from the great work that South Lakes High School did over a year ago in surveying their students. I believe it's a pervasive issue, and again, we're trying to instill passion and joy in learning, and homework does impede that when it becomes quantity over quality. The second thing is that this morning's presentation, which was that collaboration with George Mason, Fairfax County Public Schools, and Fairfax Futures, which is all about early childhood education, was a powerful presentation by the author, Alan Golinsky. This is all about executive functioning skills, and I can't tell my colleagues enough how excited I am that if we want the roadmap on truly reforming K-12 education instruction, that book with the myriad of national experts on child development...
experts on child development, it truly is the direction that we need to be taking Fairfax County schools and lead the nation in terms of how we will create the most effective learners, lifelong learners here in the United States. So I was just absolutely impressed with it, and I just wish more people had been able to be there. But I do want to compliment the many leadership team members who were also there. I think it was a strong showing for Fairfax County and for the board to be there in support of it. I also wanted to give a very special shout-out of appreciation to Mary Beth Loveglass. Mary Beth and her team met with me about 10 days ago. It was on a Friday, I know that much. And gave me a wonderful tour of the Sprague Center, which I've gone there to tape my back-to-school messages, but I've never had a full tour. And I really encourage all of my colleagues to, if you can, please make some time to go visit over there. It's really incredible what they do, and they showed me a lot of the instructional videos that they create for our teachers. And my first reaction was, this is like the Khan Academy. So really, I hope people will, will take advantage of that and really understand what that provides. I also want to extend my appreciation to Mr. Greenberg, who spoke this evening. And I look forward to hearing from him about the FCFT survey of the teachers and how things are going for them down on the front lines, because I think we, as a board, really need to stay engaged on this issue about the working conditions. I know we'll get that to come from Dr. Garza and her team as well. But there's short-term and long-term concerns here, and so I think it'll be helpful that he can bring some information to us. And so with that, I'll just say that I'm looking forward to our being able to spend time learning from our colleagues down at the Virginia School Board Association over the next few days.
Okay, Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. Tomorrow night, I'll be meeting with the Hundred Mill District PTA presidents. I'm hoping every PTA president has gotten at least three invitations by now, so we'll have as many people there as possible. I want to thank staff. Kristin Michael is not here tonight, but she will be coming with me to help explain the budget. That's the number-one item on the agenda. And, but, you know, we'll talk about whatever else people want to talk about. So thanks in advance to the PTA presidents for coming out for that. And then I'll be joining, I know, Ms. Evans and maybe some other board members on Saturday morning for the Emerging Minority Leaders Conference, put on by FCCPTA at Edison High School. Also, this Sunday at 8:00 AM, I will be at the Vienna Turkey Trot at James Madison High School, early in the morning. I won't be running, but I will be awake. It's an annual event that benefits the Madison Marching Band and the Vienna Volunteer Fire Department. I wanted to thank South Lakes High School, and especially the Culinary Arts students, for hosting a great event the other night for the librarians. It was nice, there were so many people there. And once you sat down and started eating that amazing food, you could understand why. There's, there's no draw like that food. But also to honor our librarians, which was very important. They do, they do great work every day, and it's so nice to take the time to thank them for all that they do. And then finally, in this time of Thanksgiving, I just want to say that I'm grateful to my board members and all of our staff members throughout the county, our parents and students, the whole FCPS family. It has been a good year for FCPS, a year of challenges, but also a good year. So thank you all.
Mrs. Frey?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I wanted to thank everybody who came out for the Listening Tour for the Providence District. Dr. Garza and several of my colleagues were there. It was a very, very good discussion. I thought it was productive, and there were a small enough group that people actually had an opportunity to ask anything that was on their mind. So that was really, really very good. I attended the Flint Hill Veterans Day Celebration, which was wonderful. We missed you, Mr. Moon, this year, but it was, it was terrific, standing room only, and just a wonderful celebration. Also wanted to congratulate the Jaguars and put a plug in for the new turf field. I think that's really made a difference to that community. The principal, Noe, told me that they have been able to practice and play in all kinds of weather with that turf, and it really has been quite a morale booster for the school, I think, to, to be in the playoffs. So congratulations to the Jaguars and to the Falls Church community. I sat in this past week on the employee group meeting. You may recall that we have Policy 4510, where we meet periodically with the employee groups. Dr. Garza, the leadership team, Chairman Moon, and I were there. And we talked specifically about workload, testing, and budget issues. And I very much appreciated Dr. Garza's comments tonight and want the employees to know that we're very aware of the situation in terms of their workload, their morale. In this time of year, I think everyone feels the pinch. And so just wanted to do a shout-out and, and particular thinking of you to the employees out there. And last but not least, I'll be attending VSB with some of my colleagues, and I'll be representing you at the Delegate Assembly and the Federal Relations Committee meetings. And of course, I'll be talking about advocacy and how Fairfax County is ready to lead the way and hope that they'll come right on with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veracop?
Another compositional device is the echo. So I'm going to echo Mrs. Smith and encourage everyone in the western part of the county to come to Rocky Run Middle School. It's on Monday. Okay, thank you. Thank you for getting the date right. So if you're an educator, if you are a parent, a PTA leader, and you're in the Chantilly Pyramid, Westfield Pyramid, Oakton Pyramid, or Centerville Pyramid, this is a great opportunity. One of the things I've seen that's been really amazing at the other town halls is seeing so many educators come and have an, an opportunity to have a dialogue with their new superintendent. So I really hope, Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Grimm, Mr. Banbury, that you'll encourage your staff and spread the word through, through the pyramids. And let's have a lot of folks there and have an opportunity to talk with Dr. Garza.
Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. One is I had the opportunity to be at Story Night at Staffordlin Elementary School, where they have their annual book sale, which, this is the first time I've ever been part of it, where they have a book sale to obviously attract the parents, but they also have something to attract the kids by having book reading. And they had different people in the community, and I was asked to come, not as a school board member, I'm sorry to say, but, but as Lincoln, to at least read some books and to connect with kids. So it was, it was a lot of fun, very enjoyable experience, and it is always, you're challenged on every part of, of who you are when you're, you're appearing like that, because some people just don't believe that you could be Lincoln-like, or, or don't believe really that you're even on this thing called a school board, because they don't really know what that is. So it's just a lot of fun, and I know we all do that, but it's probably the best part of our job. And we're thankful for the opportunities to always go and, and read to kids. That's, we know is the core of, of learning, is the ability to read well. The second part of this is I sent my colleagues tonight an article that was in New York Times Today by Professor Guelzo, who's a kind of a noted authority on Lincoln. He's also resides at Gettysburg College, obviously in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. And this, tomorrow, is the 150th anniversary of Lincoln's really preparation and recitation of the Gettysburg Address, something that I obviously hold near and dear to me. But the article is really focused on something that I know we all are conscious of and maybe all struggle with pretty much all the time, which is to say what we want as in fewer words as possible. In this case, Abraham Lincoln summed up the whole, frankly, the whole Civil War and the whole times, if you will, in 270 words. And 270 words, two-thirds of them were two syllable words, which is even more kind of amazing, and they were kind of words of the day. And I think the core of what becomes memorable isn't the two-hour speech that was given before he spoke by really truly the most gifted orator of the day. That's how he was described. But instead, it really became Lincoln's, if you, you want to call it a soundbite, I don't think I could ever really call it a soundbite, because it's really much more powerful and much more, and much deeper than that. But it's still something that I, that I know can make a difference in all of us. If we can keep our comments, keep our thoughts brief and very powerful and compact, they're more likely to be remembered and more likely to be effective. So, and I will continue to work on that, and I know my colleagues will, will hopefully share when I don't follow that path, and hopefully I can do better. So thank you all very much. And fourscore, and seven years ago, we'll, we'll hear that speech again. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Earlier this evening, we recognized a service by the members who served on 2013 School Bond Committee. I want to thank their service again, but it wasn't just to those committee members. We had a lot of volunteers in the community, you know, parents and, and teachers from, you know, to, you know, 197 schools throughout the county, you know, including Mr. Steve Greenberg, whom I saw quite a few times at the back-to-school nights. So I want to thank all those who helped us to pass the bond, School Bond Refram. I'm at such a high passage rate. With that, this meeting is adjourned.